Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, November 12th, 2019. Approve the council agenda. Any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor Council, I don't have any additions or corrections for tonight.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I will second.
Motion by Mary, second by Chad to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried invocation is from Hope Family Church. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Pastor Tim Van den Langenberg, Hope Family Church. You know, my father-in-law used to say to me, he'd ask, "Does your church pay you to be good or are you good for nothing?" And I always hated those two choices because I always thought, "I don't get paid to be good, so that must mean I'm good for nothing." But I like to think that even if we're not paid to be good, that we're good for something. Yesterday was Veterans Day. We thanked our veterans. But today, we're here, you're here in another meeting. And I want to say thank you for your endless hours, your dedication, your commitment, and your hard work, because the recipients and benefactors of all of that are the city, the citizens of Hutchinson. And so as we go to God in prayer, it says in James 1 that if anybody needs wisdom, all you have to do is ask, and God gives it liberally, without reproach, and does give it. And so we pray, Lord God, that wisdom and strength and encouragement would fill this room tonight, would fill the hearts and minds of this council, that each person would know that you're lifting him or her up, and that you would bless the city through these people. We thank you for this council and this city staff, in the name of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognitions of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything? All right, we do have a resolution, number 15113, resolution accepting $20,000 donation from the VFW for the reconstruction upgrade of a new alleyway, alley number 40, adjacent to the VFW.
Mayor and council have had a conversation with the VFW post, and I have shared with them that this has not been an approved project yet. You know, it's something that we're looking at and evaluating, but it has not been approved yet. They would still like the council to consider the donation and are asking that you would accept that. And so part of what I have done, and I shared this with them, and it's included in the resolution, that if we were to not use it for that, so if that project were to not take place, that we would return that check to them. And they talked about the possibility of even possibly having that go to something else within the community. And so we've left that open to where if this project would happen to not get done, that we would either return that donation back to the VFW and/or renegotiate a different use for that. We've done something similar in the past with them with, I think that was the bathroom project or playground that got switched around, so.
Make a motion to accept it.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Steve to accept the donation. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. We do have a proclamation, Aviation Month, General Aviation Appreciation Month 2019, whereas the city of Hutchinson and the state of Minnesota have a significant interest in the continued vitality of general aviation, aircraft manufacturing, aviation education institutions, aviation organizations, and community airport. And whereas general aviation in the Hutchinson Municipal Airport has an immense economic impact on the city of Hutchinson, and whereas Minnesota is home to 135 public system airports, which serve 12,890 pilots and 5,679 registered and airworthy aircraft. And whereas Minnesota is home to 109 fixed base operators, 50 repair stations, 83 heliports, 12 FAA-approved pilot schools, 2,805 student pilots, and 2,714 flight instructors. And whereas general aviation in Minnesota contributes over $5.3 billion to the state's total economic output. And whereas general aviation not only supports Minnesota economy, it improves overall life, quality of life by supporting emergency medical and healthcare services, law enforcement, firefighting, and disaster relief, and by transporting business travelers to their destination quickly and safely. Whereas the nation's aviation infrastructure represents an important public benefit, and congressional oversight should be in place of this system to ensure that it remains a public system and serves communities of all sizes. Now therefore, I, Gary Forseer, mayor of Hutchinson, do here proclaim general aviation a vitality strategic resource to the city of Hutchinson and declare November as General Aviation Appreciation Month in the city of Hutchinson. All right, moving on, public comment. Citizens addressing the council, please come forward and name your, state your name and address, and they'll have five minutes for discussion.
My name is Ricardo Alan Arbuckle. I live at 515 Lakeview Lane Southwest in Hutchinson. And the comment that I'd like to make, or a question that I'm asking the city council and the members of the city of Hutchinson here, and the subject is the no parking signs on Lakeview Lane presently. There's 19 residents on Lakeview Lane right now, both on the north side and the south side. Of those 19, I went to 18 of those residents' homes personally, and 18 of them would like, said yes, they would like the signs removed. There was one address I could not make contact with, and I have no idea if they're vacationing someplace else, or I don't know where they're at. And there was one home, that's actually on School Road, whose house borders Lakeview Lane, and he was said, yes, he would like to have the signs removed. And what I'm asking the city council and the members of the city of Hutchinson is discern this request from the residents of Lakeview Lane, and if you can make a decision on behalf of our street to remove those signs. And that's what I have.
Just answer a quick question. Did you have, was it a survey with signatures or anything?
No, at this time, I didn't have signatures. I wanted to present it, and once I looked on the internet to the procedure here to get a packet, if that's what the city council requests, then I'll go back to the street and, and signatures. People asked me if they, if I'd given their signatures, and they said, I said, "No, not at this time. Let's just present it, discern about it, and then I'll get direction from the city council on what you would like me to do to pursue this." And then I will create a form, and then put it in the city packet. Two weeks from now, I'll come back to the board with signatures if that's what your request is.
Mayor and council, I think we had two requests last year when this issue came up, and I think there wasn't, I don't think there was a form. Melissa, do we have a form?
No.
We didn't give anybody a form. I think it was...
No, it was more. Yeah, it was more petition-driven, yeah.
Yeah. And so simply what did residents on their own, kind of simply wrote a note saying, you know, I think we, the residents of whatever street, request that the council consider removing, you know, the no parking signs on this block from here to here. And then they had a list of signatures, and I think the council considered that, so.
Yeah, last year was K Street, right?
And Larson.
And Larson, so yeah, just get a petition.
And then if you want more questions, then I can fill in. I had a lot of conversation, but it's way too deep for here right now. It'd take too much time to talk about it even, so.
When we, when the others came forward before, you know, we went ahead with it, but, you know, we talked about, well, other streets can petition to have them removed too as well, so I think that would be the way to go about it.
All right then. Well, I appreciate your time. I appreciate the opportunity to present this to the city of Hutchinson, and I thank everybody. You have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Thanks.
Anybody else want to address the council? All right, moving on. We have approval of minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of October 22nd, 2019.
Make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Consent agenda, this will be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. A, approval of resolution number 15112, resolution establishing location for traffic control device, devices, handicap parking stalls. B is approval of improvement project change order number five, letting number two, project number 19-02, South Grade Road corridor improvements. C is approval of issuing short-term gambling license to the Crow River Cutters from December 1st through the 16th, 2019, at Main Street's sports bar. D is appointment of Matt Belkey to the Police Civic Service Commission to May of 2021. E is approval of street closure for Small Business Saturday event on November 30th, 2019. F is approval of revised resolution number 15037, replacing Doc A440012 and Doc A442075. Resolution approving site plan, conditional use permit, preliminary and final plat of Prince of Peace section addition, vacation of easement and vacation of alley in Block 31 in the south half of Hutchinson to construct addition to Prince of Peace senior apartments. And G is appropriations and claims and contract payments. Is there anything anybody wants pulled off?
A.
Was that A you said?
Yes.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the balance.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve the balance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. A?
I guess I just had a couple of questions when I looked at this and went out and looked at the spots. Starting with the one on First Avenue Northwest, I just questioned moving that one because, you know, of commercial businesses where it already is, you know, Dunn Brothers, some of the other shops there upstairs as well. And I know there's one across the street with Dairy Queen, but that gets a lot of activity too. The other thing I looked at was that the property owner by where this sign would be moved has their own private parking spot or parking lot. And if they parked closest, had a handicap, none, none of those stalls within their private lot are marked, no, are for handicap parking. So if the one closest to the sidewalk was a handicap parking, that's not any farther than what the handicap stall is that's being proposed. So my first question was, you know, if they feel there's a need, why not put it, make one of their spots in their own private lot, no different than some of the other commercial properties that have their own parking lots. That said, if we did want to move one, I would suggest moving the one on First Ave, on the north side of First Avenue Northeast, over by basically the sculpture stroll piece. There is a current handicap parking also on the south side of the street there too. So I don't know if I've ever seen anybody park in that existing handicap spot on the north side there, but... So, and then in regards to the Washington Avenue ones, there's two in front of State Theater that's being proposed to be moved. I can see moving the one over onto Hassan Street because there isn't a handicap parking stall there at all on either side of the street. So I can see where that would be helpful. I questioned moving the one, the other one though, the one on the west side across the alley, only because the road narrows right after that, Kent, with, because you start having the right-hand turn lane.
Yeah, yeah, the, the striping for the right-hand turn lane, yeah. Take shape there.
And just looking on my map on my phone, I saw there was a car already parked in that spot because, you know, with some of the other businesses that are there, you would be impacting them that way. So I just question about moving the one on the south side or the east side of, in front of State, but leaving the other one where it's at.
Yeah, and Steve and I briefly discussed this beforehand, but yeah, a little bit of background, you know, as you can, council can probably notice, there's not a whole lot of rhyme or reason with respect to the locations of the on-street handicap parking stalls downtown. I think the one exception might be the corner Steve was referencing at Main Street and Highway, or Highway 15 and, and First Avenue North, excuse me, where we, we did incorporate the four stalls on the respective quadrants, you know, not too many years ago, I guess. It's probably been a decade ago, but I do recall when that was done. Really, what staff is doing here, we're, we're simply being responsive to, to requests that just by coincidence came in at about the same time period. Mr. Olson drew this up. Trust me, we, we get all sorts of requests for handicap stalls and timed parking and designated parking, and, you know, we cut those off pretty quickly, you know, because we don't want to go there in any fashion. John did believe these two had merit, with the, the information he was provided with respect to the Franklin Street business over there. Steve's exactly right, they do have a private parking lot. And I got to refresh my memory, their main doorway is on the south face of the building, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, right off the sidewalk, towards the, kind of towards the center of that south face, is that right?
Actually more to the east, just slightly.
Yeah, maybe just a little bit to the east there, but, so maybe there, and I'd have to look at it, Steve, maybe there's a curb line there or something, you know, or that they, the back edge of the sidewalk, I don't know what the exact lay of the land is there. Maybe they can't easily surmount, I guess, the roadway sidewalk from their parking lot. But that might be the only reasoning I can think of. Honestly, the only other reasoning is, it's, I guess, it's probably more cost-effective to ask the city to put paint in the sign in than do it yourself on your private lot, you know, just pointing out the obvious. But yeah, that'd be the only other reasoning. And with respect to the other location in front of the State Theater, yeah, we'd move the one around the corner on Hassan there. The thought was to move the other one just to the other side of the alley. We do believe there's enough length there prior to that, that turning lane, right turning lane taking shape. The thought was there is, I think we've noticed that those handicap stalls have been utilized for some loading-unloading activity immediately out front, you know, and I'm not pointing the finger saying that's wrong or right, it's probably just not the best form, I guess, to use a handicap stall in that fashion. So I guess from staff's standpoint, we just looked at this as an opportunity, take the stall to the other side of, the west side of that alley, post it over there, and then people could actually get out of their vehicle, even if they got out of their vehicle on the roadway side, the driver's side of the vehicle, they could simply work their way to the back of the vehicle and utilize the alley apron, in essence, as a ADA curb ramp to get up onto the sidewalk and make their way. We assume the primary movement would be towards the, the front door of the, the theater.
The US.
Then that would allow then that area out front of the, the theater, if they want to utilize that as a loading-unloading zone, they're not doing that in a handicap parking stall. And, you know, they could simply cone those off if they had a delivery truck arriving or such.
Have you asked the other stores?
No, we didn't do any sort of survey. From staff's standpoint, hesitant to go there. Yeah, we might have a lot of handicap parking stalls and requests.
Well, I'm just thinking, they might not want one in front of.
Yeah, I hear you, Steve. Yeah, and I think we're just, you know, now obviously we're taking two away, we're, we're implementing two. We really want to keep it, you know, from a COVID standpoint, neutral as much as possible. We know, we know on-street parking downtown is a premium, albeit we, we know there's plenty of parking in the rear parking lots, but people definitely prefer the on-street stalls and utilizing them. So we're just trying to be conscientious with respect to absorbing those stalls with, with handicap stalls if they're not absolutely necessary.
Do you have a problem of moving the one on First Avenue Northeast?
No, I don't, Steve. No, I, yeah, don't. That's a good point, like we discussed, especially without Shopko or that, that corner, not that it was being utilized for that anyways. I think just years ago, thinking back, when we implemented those, when Cornerstone Commons was built, I think we just made a decision to, for continuity purposes, to put one on all four quadrants at that time.
Well, even the one on First Avenue Northwest on the north side, that just got added maybe five years ago. I know it was when I was on the council.
But then we add the one kitty corner then, to make all four of them? I'd have to look back, but I thought we made a decision at that point, just to have one on all four. Not that that's going to three out of the four quadrants, especially with not knowing what the future holds from the Shopko area. Yeah, I think that one could go away. Doesn't serve much purpose on the northeast there.
I think, just talking about First Avenue Northwest, I know that's a very small driveway going in between the two buildings going north, and I know that the one on the right is a, that name totally over my head, but anyway, I know that's commercial, and he has a pickup and he has a trailer when he wants to move supplies out of that, out of that. That is really, would be tough to put a handicap parking inside that lot and then try and maneuver around that, because there must be about a two-foot drop-off to the north between those two lots where that other one to the north of the commercial building is. So I can see why they would want the one on the corner there rather than on their private property, because he'd never get in and out of there with a trailer. So I'm thinking that would be the plus side to put that one there, but yeah.
That's a good point. If, would, I guess I would make a motion to just leave the one on First Avenue Northwest on the north side, but move the one on the north side of First Avenue Northeast over west.
Yep, and that's perfectly fine. I think we were just being, you know, conscientious. We didn't want to absorb, you know, two stalls on that block. I don't think it's going to hurt anybody, but we know those stalls can somewhat be at a premium, you know, with Dunn Brothers there and any-time fitness, especially in the morning hours. But, you know, absorbing another one on that side of the street and having two handicap stalls, I don't, I don't think anybody should be too upset, is what it boils down to.
You made that a motion, Steve?
Yeah, and I'm, I guess, fine with the Washington Avenue one, so.
I will second that.
Motion by Steve, second by Mary to approve those handicap stalls. Any other discussion?
Do you understand, Melissa, what I was trying to get at there? Kent can help you there.
Yeah, I got it. We'll get it right out in the field.
Call a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. All right, moving on. No public hearing. Hutchinson Public Library Annual Update. Did you bring us a story to read us, or?
Well, Rochelle may have. I brought Rochelle, that's even better. Good evening, mayor and city council members. Katie Hiltner with Head Librarian of Hutchinson Public Library, and behind me is Rochelle Goldie, who is our new Youth Services Librarian, and I'm going to give her a chance to talk. She already met the mayor, already did a fantastic, I'm just going to talk about it, a job fair over at the New Discovery, so. But that's her piece, so I'm just going to get through my piece here. Just wanted to say, I can't believe time goes by so quickly here, and I think it's because we do a month at a time, 28 days, and so like we're already into December. Every time we turn, like check somebody out, it's like we're on to the next month, so. But I feel like I've just been here, but I have to say, last week that I had a library patron tell me that she was in the library and it was her happy place. And I'm like, yes, if we can get every person at the library to come and feel that, that welcome and that excitement to be in the library. Every year when I come before you, I just like to give you a snapshot view of the library. Over the past year, we always do an annual report, and these are numbers from the 2018 annual report that we submit to the Minnesota Department of Education. So in 2018, we had 17,347 users, 468 of these were reciprocal borrowers, which means they are living in other cities, but when they come through Hutchinson, they can register their card and check out materials from our library. Minnesota's really great about doing that. We did have a growth then... Um, we did have a growth then, um, in 2018 of four hundred and seventy-three registrants. And as of October of this year, we've already added four hundred and twenty-eight new patrons. So we keep having new people come through the door, which is exciting. One of our efforts, um, along with building a great collection and making the library viable and, um, meaningful for patrons is we like to give them a reason to come through the door. I always say that the library is more than books, we're now community centers. Um, and we're constantly trying to grow our program opportunities. So in 2018, we had a hundred and forty-three programs with an attendance of five thousand, four hundred and eighty-three people. Uh, we try to do a lot of outreach in the community. I remember Chad specifically telling me I should get a bike mobile and, and ride around the, the city. Um, haven't done that yet, Chad, I have not given up on the idea. But it did raise a really important point about making sure we're going out into the community, that we're actually reaching out, um, to, for our programs and other venues. We've been to the senior center, uh, we do programs at the museum. Liz at HCVN films our events, so if people can attend our programs, they can watch them on there. People always say they want something new to watch. Um, Rochelle, she'll talk about this, is working currently with ECFE, and we're gonna bring bedtime storytimes back to the library, which will be really exciting. And she's also planning to go there as well, so it'll be a combination program. We did a wellness fair last year at Hutchinson Technology. Rochelle, um, I've probably saw in the newspaper, has also done a story how we're at the farmer's market. And we're just constantly trying to find new opportunities to go out to the community and, you know, bring people to us, but reach them as well. Of course, the reason I'm standing in front of you is 'cause none of this would be possible without all of your support and your funding. Um, not only are we provided with an amazing facility and support staff, um, I'm gonna put this on TV. JJ Verhe is amazing, he is the best facility manager. You just look at the bathrooms, that's all I can say.
Is that all done now?
They are, I'm getting to that, yeah, I'm so excited, they're all done. Um, and I'm all excited about the bathrooms, I lost, somebody told me we should've had a ribbon cutting ceremony to unveil the bathrooms, they look that good. Um, anyway, but I wanted to talk a little bit of this evening, um, about the funding for the library. In your council packets, there are two pie charts that I put together, just real basically explaining the library's income and expenses. And these are estimated figures, um, for 2019. As you can see, most of the funding does come from the city, um, city contributions. And then we also have a portion of funding, um, through McLeod County, they support all four libraries in the county. We're also fortunate to have support of the Friends of the Library, as well as generous patrons who gift us other funds throughout the year. Other income, as you'll see, stems from charges and fines, um, copy machine printouts and other sources. Um, so that, did you have any questions on that? Were the, no, okay. And as far as the expenditures go, primarily our, um, funding for the library goes for staff. Uh, we currently have fourteen library staff members. Um, I'm the full-time and then everybody else is part-time. And while a great deal of our budget goes to staff expenses, I wanna give a shout out to our amazing volunteers. Our community, well, as you know, is built on volunteers. It's just incredible how much, um, we have at, um, especially within the library. In 2018, our estimated volunteer hours, and this is just an estimate, this next year we're gonna try to hone it down a little more, but just estimating, it was a total of one thousand, seven hundred and ninety hours. And that doesn't even include what the Friends of the Library do, and they're, they're beyond amazing. Um, another area of expense that's listed is called Pioneer Land, um, Library System or Library Services. Because Hutchinson is a branch library of Pioneer Land, we're one of thirty-two libraries. So, um, part of our funding goes with Pioneer Land. They provide services which include book processing, cataloging, IT support, HR, bookkeeping, web maintenance, et cetera. So something that goes towards that. Obviously, collection development is another area of the pie chart. Um, again, we're fortunate for the Friends, they help support our library's collection development. They provide us funds each year specifically for DVDs and audiobooks, so we're really lucky with that. Um, and although we can't have everything, everybody wants the library, we try really hard. A great benefit of being part of Pioneer Land is that we have access throughout the system. We're connected to all thirty-two of those libraries. In addition, Minnesota is fantastic that we have a system called MinLink, which accesses all of, um, public libraries, universities and colleges throughout Minnesota, that we can go to them and ask them for materials. And we order in quite a number of materials for patrons. In addition to that, we have a ILL department through Pioneer Land that works really hard to even seek sources outside of that system. So we have, have a lot of opportunity to fill people's requests. Um, and I wanted to make a side note, in 2020, a portion of the library's reserves, um, will be used to build that collection development this, this next year coming up. You'll notice that, um, the new equipment, this portion of the pie chart looks a little larger this year. That's because we're trying to anticipate some future remodeling expenses. This funding would be used to help with the library updates, such as furniture, shelving, things like that. Um, don't have anything definite, but JJ and I are definitely working on that. And this is where I gotta do a shout out to the bathrooms. Um, we did the bathrooms, um, this fall and then the roof was the summer, so we're all updated for that. And I wanted to mention, programming is also an expense on the pie chart. You're going to see that it looks, um, really minimal, but I wanted to mention that legacy dollars are available. Um, and that's not reflected in this pie chart because those funds are funneled through Pioneer Land. So we have access to that. They give McLeod County money and Jackie Fountain and I, um, who is the Head Librarian in, uh, Glencoe and Broughton, we divide that money out, um, throughout the county and do various programming with that. And again, the Friends are another major supporter. They do so much to support our programs. They sponsor the finale summer reading program, they provide funds for teen and adult author programs, they provide funds for the purchase of programming supplies for children, tweens and teens. We, we really get a lot of supplement. Um, Rochelle also accesses multiple Prairielands grants, um, so that covers much of the expense for the teen programs. And this past year Rochelle also applied, you're hearing her name a lot, you get the idea, she's doing a lot already. Um, this past year she applied for and received a Young Adult Library Services Association grant for Future Ready Grant, which is part of why we were able to do, um, the Job Fair Program with New Discoveries. And then, and on top of that, we're also very fortunate, the other groups, such as the Rotary and Kiwanis, provide funds for children's programs. So, does anyone have any questions on that? That's the fast and furious of library expenses.
I was just curious, budget-wise, you know, what's your increase this year versus last year, you know, um, for our part of it, I guess.
You mean for 2019 to 2020?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, they actually kept it the same, and the reason for that is because we had reserves. So rather than coming, I think they're thinking like another year or so, there might be a bigger project coming. So rather than coming to the city saying, give us more money, we're, we're just gonna say, yep, last year worked and I can dip into those reserves. Um, yeah, yeah.
But again, then another project, you're thinking a bigger project would be remodeling of some kind.
For me it would be, that's why I'm dipping into those reserves for 2020. I don't know if that will come this next year, we were looking for a grant, you remember we had Bailey help us with the roof and the bathroom, so Bailey left. And so, so we have to get a little creative on, on where to find another grant and, and put that project forward. But Rochelle and I have a lot of ideas of how we wanna update things in there. It's just, and it's nice because if we don't spend it, it'll just roll over. What?
Little coffee bar.
We have, yes, that's actually come up in library board meetings, yes, yes, lots of ideas, lots of ways to make it innovative, so. Yeah, any other questions? Okay, well, I've, I've done talking my piece, but I really wanted to give Rochelle a chance to talk with you and do a formal introduction.
I had one general question.
Yeah, Chad.
So I have a little mini free library in my front yard.
Yes.
And if I had some, and I know there's a lot of those mini libraries in town, um, is if I had some stale inventory, is that something you can make a donation to the library, or do you guys not take used books or?
Oh, we do, the Friends of the Library take used books. Yep, as long as they're in, in fairly good condition. You know, you don't want the, unfortunately, we have patrons that everyone cannot get rid of their books, but then sometimes they're not, they're like beyond the point of anyone being able to, but yeah.
Oh, they're in good shape, so they've been hanging out in my library.
Oh, yeah, just drop them off at the library at the front desk. Oh, yeah, yeah, no, that's, that, thank you for doing that. Yeah, I've, I've got ideas, hopefully next year I can come to the city council with my other idea that relates to that, so. While I work on that bike mobile.
Yeah, it's surprising how many people use the mini free library. And, uh, my miniature printer gives me an alarm and lets me know whenever I have a patron out front, so.
That's your welcome.
Kinda with that though, as far as replenishing and getting new stock, are there opportunities to get books from the library for that?
That's what I'm, that's what, that's a good question, that's what I was thinking too, maybe we need to, I'll talk with the Friends. Maybe it's possible to come up with some kind of trading system.
Sure.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I have a lot of friends.
That goes along my.
Well, I have a lot of friends that have kids, little kids, and then everybody wants to get rid of their kids' books. And then also, um, elementary school teachers are a good resource, you know, they end up with too many books. So I've had a good chance to like have new inventory, you know, it's just I've had a lot of adult inventory that doesn't, doesn't move as quick. Kids, kids use the mini library more than adults do.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
When people dump their books in my library and then they, it sits and it is what it is.
Yeah, yeah. No, I like that idea of some kind of exchange program, some way to like move them around the community a little bit, mm-hmm.
I was just gonna say, there's also electric bikes, so you can, uh.
I, oh, yeah, but I think I need the exercise, let's admit it.
Still have to pedal on them.
That's true, that is true, I've heard they actually can be allowed, okay.
Unless you'll have this load behind you.
Yeah, there you go, I'm, I'm liking this, it's getting more convincing. Well, I'm gonna, um, pass the microphone to Rochelle if you don't mind, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
You've been busy.
Hello, yes. Yes, I'm Rochelle Goldie, and I was previously the Teen Services Librarian here in Hutchinson. And, um, I recently took, uh, the Children's Librarian position and we, I guess to use children's terms, mushed them together and got a Youth Services Librarian, which is what I do now. Um, just real quick for the summer reading stats for this last summer, we had three hundred and forty-nine children sign up and two hundred and forty, uh, completed the program and turned in their reading logs. And we had seven storytimes and there was a hundred, or eight hundred and ninety-two in attendance for all seven. Um, and then for the Young Adults or the Teen Services, we had sixty signups and forty-six logs turned in, which was more than what we had the previous year. Um, for the Fall and Winter Programs, we are pretty much keeping it the same through December. And then after December, there'll be some changes in names of programs and then the addition of some new programs. So the Storytime, it's previously, or right now it's called Bookworm Buddies. It's going to be renamed to just Storytime. Um, we're taking away the age limits, 'cause right now it's just three, four and five-year-olds. Taking away the age limits to open it up to all ages, that way homeschoolers with older kids or younger kids can come and everyone can participate. Um, and then if there's like a no-school day, they can, the whole family can come. Um, we're going to do Lego Club, currently it's called Building Buddies, this is supported by Kiwanis. And we just used, um, quite a bit of Kiwanis funds to purchase a large amount of Lego books for all ages across the collection, as well as, um, a couple sets of Duplos for the little kids and several sets and some robotic sets and STEM sets for the Lego Club kids. Um, and that's going to be open to all ages, but children under nine will need to attend with an app, with a parent or an adult. We're going to keep the Fun with 4H program, um, we partner with 4H, we meet once a month and it's for grade six, or K through six, and we focus on STEM and STEAM, um, like science, technology, engineering, uh, concepts with the kids in fun ways. So we make, like this last time, we focused, our theme was unicorns, but we made unicorn slime, so it was cool for the boys too. And then I bring the literature part of it, and then we read a story and I present different books for the kids to look through. Um, we just partnered with ECFE and we're gonna do the Bedtime Storytime. Our first one's November twentieth and, um, they're providing an activity and a snack for the kids and then I will be doing a Storytime. And we are going to continue it after the holiday season and run from January through April for those once a month. We're keeping the One Thousand Books Before Kindergarten program, and we currently have four hundred and six children signed up, two hundred and forty-two families and fifty-one students have completed the program. And then once they complete it, they get their own little, um, hardcover book to keep. It's an easy reader, so they could keep it and keep practicing their stories. And hopefully they're about kindergarten age when they finish, so they're starting to learn how to read too. Other programs we're working on, but don't have all the details ready to present yet, but we're going to do a royal, a Royal Ball Storytime with Hutchinson Water Carnival Royalty, and then a Nutcracker Storytime with the Touch of Grace Dance Studios. Let's see, for the teen programs, Coding Club has been a huge hit, and that's for ages ten to eighteen. Rotary has, um, graciously offered us a grant that is going to allow us to add a lot of materials and books for kids of all ages, so it's not just going to be for the ten to eighteen-year-olds now. Now I can get things for the little biddies for Storytime all the way up through the teens. Um, we're going to move it from Tuesday nights, once a month, to Saturday night mornings, once a month, to bring in more kids, 'cause a lot of kids have after-school programs on Tuesdays. We're, we have a Makerspace program also for ages ten to eighteen, and it's more of like a free time art club where they can come, they get art materials provided, a snack, and they can get creative, make whatever they would like to make. And then we're doing a Teen Book Club. It's very small right now, but we're hoping it will grow. And then we do an annual Harry Potter party for the teens. It was a huge success, we had fourteen come and we watched a movie. This was the first time we actually watched one of the whole movies, and we made wands, had themed decorations and themed food buffets for them. Um, and then we do the One Hundred Books Before Graduation, and we currently have twenty-two teens participating. We started in last September with that one. And then they get a lot of career and college readiness materials throughout the program as they complete it. So, and then one of the big grants that we are just wrapping up is the Future Ready with the Library Grant. And we partnered with the New Discoveries Monster Academy in presenting career and college readiness materials to middle school students, so fifth through eighth graders. And we had our big final event on October twenty-fifth, where we had a career fair, Mayor Fercier came. Um, we had twenty, uh, seventy-one students and teachers total in attendance at the career fair. And throughout the month of October, the classrooms, the seventh and eighth graders were taught a career unit and they did how to write, um, research, or how to research careers, how to do resumes, how to do mock interviews, things like that, to get more familiar with looking for careers. Um, and then I am currently working on the final report to submit that to the YLSA, RSL and IMLS. Question?
That's all?
You've been busy.
Yes, yes.
That's really great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For us, Steve. Thanks, Katie.
All right, moving on, uh, review of wastewater treatment facility flushable wipes issue and recent city staff efforts.
Yeah, I'll turn this over to Tim here once loaded up, if you have PC there. There you go. All right, yeah, we just wanted to take an opportunity to touch base. Obviously, uh, we've had some flushable wipes and other blockage issues, um, over the years, recent years here. Uh, uh, the major one, Tim will touch on here, uh, again, along with recent efforts. But, uh, you know, we had one to the tune of, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars not too long ago. So wanted to touch on this issue and then what staff's been doing just recently here to help us address it. Uh, you know, this has been in the works, or the issue's been evolving, well, since that plant we were talking about at the workshop went online in nineteen eighty-eight, give or take, so. And, uh, with that, Tim?
Yep, thanks again. Uh, mayor, council, public at home, uh, just wanted to revisit the issue that I brought forward. Um, several months ago, I kinda blurted at the end of one of the council meetings, hey, remember that blockage in the valve that cost us two hundred and fifty thousand right after I showed up unseen here? Well, we've got another one, so, um, for lack of a better title, uh, continued operational challenges, mainly wipes, uh, equipment limitations and regulations. So I always like to start a presentation with a little leading question, kinda some food for thought. So we've all been in businesses and restaurants, seen all these signs in the bathrooms. So if an employee of a wastewater treatment plant uses a bathroom, a restroom, are they still required to wash their hands before returning to work?
Well, do you?
Whoa, guaranteed, we go through a lot of hand soap, so, yes. Uh, just a little review, kinda go over what a typical municipal wastewater treatment system, uh, is comprised of, basically from the homes and businesses, uh, the services go into the streets, uh, everything. The services go into the streets, everything's out of sight, out of mind. Ends up going to low points into lift stations where all of the wastewater is pumped at some point. Goes to main lift stations, which then it gets pumped over to the plant. And this is very generic, not necessarily depicting our plant. Goes through some form of screening to get larger objects out, hopefully. Things like rags, chip bags, other things that might get into the system. Then the water's pumped, sometimes goes into a heavy solid settling tank. We don't have that. Instead, we have very fine screening. So our, our screens do the, the removal of some of the heavier solids. Then the wastewater goes into the aeration tank, which is mixed with the microbiology that do the work for us, clean the water. After they have their food, their little meal of the wastewater, they go over to the final clarifiers on the right side where they're settled out for returning back to get another meal in the aeration tank. Then the clean water overflows. The clarifiers goes over for some, in the summer months, UV disinfection to take care of any pathogenic bacteria that are remaining in the water before that's either reused in our plant or gets transferred, re-oxygenated and discharged into the south fork of the crow. Shows some of the solids handling also on the bottom right. Basically as our microbes are, are having their meal of the nutrients that are found in wastewater, they expend that energy, they multiply, they make new baby microbes to help us. We only need a certain number of microbes in our system, so we have to continually get rid of some of the older ones. So we put them in retirement at the digesters. And when we have full digesters, we will press the water out of them. And they have a lot of nutrient value of potassium or phosphorus and nitrogen, so we're lucky enough to land apply all our bio-solids for the most part onto farmers' fields of the area of farmers for, in lieu of them using fertilizer. So getting into the wipes, the history of wipes, so you're telling me flushable wipes aren't flushable? No, Felix, they're not and they should never be disposed of down the sanitary sewer system. A little bit of history, like we said, our first issue was four and a half years ago, right when I arrived on scene. I think it was a week or two before and all of a sudden, one of the force mains from one of our main lift stations was blocked entering into the plant. And it was a twelve-inch line which had a eight-inch diameter plug valve that got inoperable, would not have any flow through it. So we put a plan in place. Obviously, we had no way of changing this valve out just in the position it was in the plant. There was a, a headwaters tank upstream of it that we could not get around in the operation of our daily flows. So we put a rerouting piping system in so that we could change this eight-hundred-dollar valve to the tune of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Luckily, we had that in place this last time because we had to use that bypass system again to change the new one that was, just became clogged. So just after that, we also undertook another fifty thousand dollars to put a grinder in at this lift station that this line was coming from so that we could try to grind up some of the, the solids that were coming into there before they get pumped over and caught in the system. So this is the same valve which is clogged up after, or cleaned up after it was removed. It's a tangled mess of basically re-ragging of shredded rags. So these wipes materials, sometimes even though they go through grinders, it's almost like ricing it where it'll just perforate it and shred it and make it into longer strands. These strands can catch on a simple little burr inside of a valve or a pipe, hang on there and flop in the flow and as more of that material comes by, it just tends to grab it, knot it up and turns into a, a ball like this. Now this one is, like I said, eight inches in diameter and forty-eight inches from end to end on this tail. Not all of them make it into the system. Sometimes in our efforts to bypass and use our bypass plumbing, it ends up taking those matted materials and just put them into different areas. And this is our equalization basin lift station where when we bypass water coming into the headworks of the plant, it goes into a two-million-gallon holding basin and that water has to eventually get pumped out. Now any rag materials or solids that go over there when we're bypassing into the plant end up causing trouble, problems with our pumps. And this is one of those submersible pumps that basically got a rag ball caught into it. Now this is the easier thing to handle because we can actually take this off and, and pull it out and clean it up and put the pump back into service. We like to say the rule of thumb for the public for flushing materials, if it doesn't come out of your body or is toilet paper, it doesn't get flushed down the drain or into the sewer system. So I won't go through the list here, but it's not often a popular subject to talk about. But yeah, basically anything that doesn't come out of your body or is specifically toilet paper, even, even paper towels or Kleenexes are of a different makeup than what toilet paper is, so it's not designed to readily dissolve when it hits the sewer system. Last year we went through and it was projected on the capital improvement to replace this pump. When we did pull this pump out and replace it with the new one, we found this pump in this condition. Basically, the guys could not even pull any of this material out of there. It was so ragged up. It's amazing that this pump was still pumping. We really didn't see a lot of decrease in the amount of flow that it pumped. But we think that the reason we were changing this pump out is was the, the one that was the same age of it was replaced two years before because the volute had wore all the way through. So we guessed that this one was pretty wore out too. So it may have just sloshed the water around the impeller instead of actually through it. You could see there's, you know, article clothing in the center of the impeller, in the center picture. Other wipes materials, there's plastic bags, zip ties. It's, it's crazy. So this keeps adding to our collection of equipment that is plagued with wipes materials. So on to when I came in and blurted, hey, guess what? We've got another one. This time it was a ten-inch diameter valve from the main lift station which handles most of the water in the city coming to the plant. And this was some of the efforts in October to basically clean that wipes and accumulated material that was in this headworks wet well that I said was upstream of these valves in an effort to be able to change this valve again and not have re-ragging of any of the other four, force valve, or force main valves. I want to add that our, our staff takes a lot of time to, in my words, work hard, smart, work smarter, not harder. They take a lot of innovation. The dab it arm you see there has an electric winch on. They commandeered that from down at the main lift station was used for a different purpose. We brainstormed to see, you know, how can we get all these matted wipes out of the bottom of this wet well and, and this is on a rooftop of a building. So we actually had to take all these wipes, lift them up to the roof from inside the wet well and then separate them into five-gallon pails which were manageable enough to be able to drop off the roof and then deposit into dumpsters. You can see the middle port picture is Matt Keller. He's down inside. He's actually standing on a mat that was about a foot and a half thick of just wipes materials. So we had to bring them up clawful by clawful and then take those and separate them into three or four, five-gallon pails. Safety was paramount there. These guys are wearing cut-resistant and, you know, waterproof gloves for their protection. Ever mindful of sharps that could be in there and, and other debris. It could be glass or whatnot, so. They basically had to take, you could see a linoleum knife and they cut these rag balls apart so that we could get them down safely.
Tim, before you, before you move on, you talk about, you know, there were ten cubic yards of matted wipes and thirty cubic yards of grit. What is the grit?
The grit is something that normally would be settled out. The original processes of the plant and the original plant and, and main lift station had for coarse grit removal at the lift station and would not be pumped to the, the plant itself. Through some changes in the past, before I came there, we took away some bar screen, heavy materials, rakes and also did away with the, the coarse grit separation and removal down there in lieu of putting in grinders and then trying to remove it at the, at the headworks building of the plant. This is one of the things that we're trying to correct. Sometimes when you make changes, it affects something else down the road that you didn't anticipate and this is just one of the issues. I just don't understand when the plant was built and, and there may be some other reasons why the configuration of this tank here when it, when it comes into the plant. And it, it acts as a settling tank and a place for this material to want to settle without a means of removal. So that's one thing that we're looking at and we're working with Nero to plan on correcting and trying to see if we can have efforts that will get this portion of the plant functioning well. And I have a schematic of this that kinda details that a little bit too in the future, but I have other pictures here. So here was the day we removed the valve and the upper left is the valve. We, we don't have a tail on this one because we actually had to cut it off on both sides in order to remove it from the piping. But the, the lower left is our, our two valves and our pump. We maintain a collection now for show and tell and, and for public relations and, you know, public service announcements, so. Wipes is a big issue and so we try to keep these things around and, and give, as we give tours, you know, we, we tell people about this and it's pretty awesome to them to see what happens. Again, we borrowed a roll-off from Creekside. We filled this one full of the grit material. So it's a twenty-yarder and we actually filled another one half-full after that of, of more grit. Lucky to say we did, on the day that we finally pulled the pin and changed that, this valve out was the day that they finally got the entire wet well cleaned of, of grit and wipes material. It took six, seven days, eight-hour days to get all the material out of there with help from the streets department and, and the jetter crew and anybody that could come over and help and even Jim Navatra was there. He was from the water plant. He helped us one day, so. Really was a group effort to get that done. We wanted to get it totally clean so that we wouldn't have any re-ragging of these other valves in the future and plans are in place now to do preventative maintenance in spring and fall. We plan on getting in, getting into this wet well and, and making sure anything that's accumulated over the six months, we get out of there until we can make, you know, more permanent changes. So this is that diagram of the wet well, so this is kind of a side view. This is that building. The pipes that come in from the left, like I said, these are the force mains that come in. There's four, four lines, two from each of our two major lift stations. They come underground, then they narrow up to go through flow meters and then they go into the bottom of this wet well. So at the bottom of, you know, my creative brown dashed lines there is the soaped floor of that wet well. The blue line is what the normal water level mark would be that overflows these V-notch weirs and then goes by gravity over to our screening process. So where our lines come in, our force mains, is at the very bottom and basically the collection point of anything that would settle in that tank. The brown kinda shows how when we first got into that tank on the first day, kinda the level of the grit and the rag material as, as it would been in there. Kinda gauged it by that other crossing pipe that came through there. But what we found out would happen is we normally run one force main or the other from each lift station. So as one force main was flowing, the other, the other force main grit and rags were probably backing back down through the pipe down and settling in the bottom. So then when you put that force main on, if you have rag material on there, you've got this big plug that surges up and gets caught into the narrow point or the venturi of the system, which is the valve. Here you can see the latest force main valve is the blue one. We made changes here. One of the things that we did was realize that when our plug valves are closed, they are closed to the down position, which leaves the body of the valve susceptible for settling material into it. And that's a normal practice if you don't have solids in the material that could possibly come back into that valve body. So what we did with this one is we made sure that when the valve is closed, as you can see, the, the plug is to the top, so it negates anything from coming back and resting and settling inside that valve. This is another picture on the, on the right is of our original static screens for the ditch system. One problem with these is they're not self-cleaning. When they put the MBR in, they put rotating drum screens in which have spray bars on them and they'll automatically clean themselves. So as, these screens are very fine. If there's fibrous material and wipes material, like a cotton ball, you know, rake across your stubbly beard, it tends to clog and tear away and so it, it fills these pores. And for sixteen hours of the day, we're not at the plant on the after hours, so this becomes an issue if all of a sudden there's a sudden onset of this material that comes through in the off-hours. These screens will blind and then overflow and, and then we get calls in because we have high sump alarms and stuff that will tell us of the condition. So that's one of the things we want to also correct. We want to go to more self-cleaning screens or have all self-cleaning screens in, in the future. This is an example of one, two-hour period. I happened to just one day, it was like a year or so ago, go into that, watch those static screens that you just saw and all of a sudden all this material started popping out on these screens. And so I just, wow, this is pretty abnormal for here. And it was, I just watched it for a period of two hours and I started collecting all that stuff and I popped it off into a pail and and these were all the things that I found at that time. And you can see laid out and cleaned. These wipes, they do not disintegrate, you know, at all in the collection system or even going through our main lift station pumps on their way to the, the treatment plant, so. Again, the lower left you can see, you know, it's an eighteen-inch-long piece of wipe there that's totally intact.
Isn't it right though that, you know, with that one diagram, there's non-flushable wipes, there's flushable wipes, there's other types of paper products that you talked about.
Correct.
Hygiene products. Hygiene products.
Yeah, I tried to put that, uh, that picture in this and for some reason it didn't want to transfer. Um, so I included it in your packet and it just goes to show, you know, that's kind of to the labeling, how much, you know, even though it's labeled non or, or, or flushable, truly is flushable, that's only, you know, a small portion. But habit, and like I said, legislation or anything that might happen to say, oh, you have to label these things big and bold. You know, it's just commonplace now that people have a habit that, you know, they don't even look at to see if it says that it's flushable. You know, if it's a makeup wipe or a baby diaper wipe or whatever, it's, it just, they don't want to have it in the trash. It, it just goes into the toilet. It's just too easy.
Yeah. I think the confusion is Steve, flushable is a term created by the paper industry. It's not created by laws, legislation, or the wastewater treatment industry. Yeah, and that's goes back to what Tim's saying. Really from the wastewater treatment industry, you know, it's, it's toilet paper and, and nothing else because they can in essence put flushable on anything. There's nothing controlling what gets labeled flushable.
Like I always say, matchbox cars are flushable if you have kids, but they're not designed to go into the sanitary treatment system. Or if you're paying a plumber to remove them, you're not too happy. So this really drives home the truth about wipes. This is a simple test that anybody can do at home. Um, take three jars, um, put, put some super strong absorbent, uh, toilet paper in one and then throw a flushable wipe and even a non-flushable wipe in and, uh, shake it up and see what it does. And basically the toilet paper is designed to dissolve into a watery slurry and get transferred at, but, you know, and break up by the time it gets to any pumps and not cause problems in, uh, plugging of pipes and sanitary sewer system. This is a little brochure that I put together, um, really defines, you know, what the issue is for us with the, uh, flushable or non-flushable wipes, uh, and the debris that goes into the, uh, the sewer system and what we're finding. So, uh, continue to, uh, do some public awareness. We want to do stuff on Facebook, on a website, uh, news flashes every once in a while. I'll pop it up, uh, on the website as, uh, recent news, just to kind of bring it to the forefront again, that there's still the issue out there. And of course, with all these efforts that I'm talking about, I've just wanted to make sure that everybody, uh, met our team. Um, we're a little factory out there. We take dirty water. We make clean water for the environment. Um, uh, there's all sorts of skill trades that are out there, mechanics and laboratory personnel and operations people. Um, so, uh, you know, we do a lot with a few people, um, and even outside of ours. So, uh, just wanted to call attention. This is basically, uh, when we got a, award from the MPCA for, uh, accommodating our, our excellent operation for last year. This is a little snippet out of what I just received. Uh, as I said, they looked at our, uh, compliance over the year and it's not a calendar year. It's from October first to September thirtieth. So all of the information that, uh, regulatory information that we have to report on, as you can see, uh, seven hundred and nineteen pieces of regulatory data, uh, zero of it missing and zero violations. And that doesn't come easily. That's definitely not me. That's all of those six people and even more striving to, uh, do an excellent job each and every day. Um, we don't do it for the fame or, you know, accolades. Basically we say where they're forgotten about people and most of public works is, you know, when, when you're not hearing anything, you're, and you're taken for granted, that means you're doing a good job. Cause nobody's thinking about you. It's usually when things are going wrong that, that's when you get noticed. So, um, just if, uh, people can flush the toilets and it goes away, that's a good thing. We're away. We always like to say, we're away when they say they flush it and it goes away. Things that are looming on the horizon, I just want to touch some of this stuff. Um, construction's underway, uh, to rehabilitate our yeast oxidation ditch and, and replace surface mixer aerators with more efficient turbo mixers that separate the aeration process. Uh, this is some of the stuff we talked about in our workshop, uh, Steve there. Uh, use of the mint tap biological nutrient removal BNR study that was performed this summer, uh, to further investigate and trial the possibilities of BNR processes at our plant. Uh, we want to research and entertain proposals for replacement of the existing SCADA system hardware. We know that's obsolete, uh, and whether a program switch is warranted, uh, the existing hardware is just, it's proprietary, it's beyond obsolete and, uh, the software is loosely, uh, industry supported. Use the information gathered at the wastewater facility, uh, with the wastewater facility assessment to most accurately plan and prepare for process and capital needs of the plant to ensure its viability into the foreseeable future and, and to meet or exceed the requirements of the operating permit. Um, by accurately forecasting budgetary requirements, we can set user rates at a level to achieve the facility and infrastructure, uh, sustainability and improvement needs. We want to continue to work cooperatively with the MPCA in developing a permit that has attainable solutions to environmental concerns without the community economic hardship. So, uh, I think I've had a pretty good relationship with the MPCA during this permitting process. Like we mentioned, that, uh, permit's been expired for two and a half years and we've been operating under the original, the, the existing permit. Um, but, uh, they've seemed to have taken the stand in, in this go around for, uh, at least my experience that they're not ramming, uh, new, uh, tighter limits at us without good reason. And, and when we've raised questions, they've, they've taken our concerns, uh, into account. Uh, we want to pursue improvement projects to reduce our demand on utilities, gain efficiencies in the overall treatment process, uh, the further separation of aeration and mixing processes in the MBR treatment train and in the bio solids aerobic digestion tanks is, uh, is, uh, areas that we're looking at. Continue, uh, community outreach efforts to communicate the detrimental effects of wipes and other non-flushable materials disposed of via the sewer system. And then, uh, we're involved and we want to keep fueling the partnership that the city public works department has with the high school Tiger Path program and helping to guide young people into career, uh, great careers in this critical services, uh, provided to municipals, municipalities and industry in the protection of our environment. So, uh, I'd like to thank you for your time and entertain any questions. Uh, one of the things I wanted to do, I tried to get more of our staff here because they definitely deserve the recognition, uh, both from, uh, council and the, and the general public. But, you know, I, I myself never attended a council meeting until I had to four years ago. So, um, but, but Matthew Keller, one of our youngest guys here.
Was it a coincidence that you were a young, smaller trimmer guy and you're down in the picture?
I think, I think Tim said, hey, Matt, I got a fun job for you to do tomorrow.
I know how seniority works. Yeah.
Delegation, huh?
Yeah, and, and he's a lot easier to pull up from the winch.
To me, I think this is, just reiterates our stance we've taken on the flushable wipe issue with legislature. I think the pictures show the problem that it's creating for municipalities, um, and treatment facilities and the thousands and hundreds of thousands of dollars that it's costing cities to deal with it.
But even with that, I mean, it, it's more than that because it's all these other, all this other material that's getting down there too. So, you know, how do you get people? Just toilet paper, that's it.
Yeah, I was going to mention that. And I commend Tim and, and staff and, and really Tim for taking this on and, you know, really figuring out a way to approach it like you described. Cause this is an issue that started when the new plant was built, you know, in that wet well, you know, was it? That debris, that mat started accumulating thirty years ago, you know, based on the design of that, that two million gallon wet well there. And, you know, we've talked about the de- design flaws of it and how it's configured and, you know, it really gets back to, uh, you know, what we've identified, you know, over the last year or so is what really needs to be done from a headworks standpoint with respect to the overall wastewater facility going forward to correct this. And, and there's been debris, you know, the long list that Tim had up there of things that get flushed down toilets and, and, you know, that stuff's been accumulating and it settles in the wet well and the pipes and the, the sumps of, uh, lift stations and such. And, but, uh, this really, this wipe issue is really taken hold in the relatively recent past and I think it's just blown up and it's just compounded what's already existed within sewer systems. You know, there was a, I think it was in Moorhead, didn't they have like a four foot? There was one in their trunk. Yeah, forest mains. Yeah. I mean, they had a ball that was four feet in diameter, you know, in this huge forest main. Yeah. I mean, so these, I mean, it's just, and we're, and we're going to try to, you know, reach out to some, you know, some industries, maybe some, uh, you know, I'm not going to point fingers, but we, we have an idea where some of this stuff might be originally originating from more so than, than others. And, you know, we're not blaming people, but I think there needs to be an education effort there, you know, that, uh, you know, let's try to limit what we put down the drain, uh, you know, to the contrary to what it might say on the packaging.
Well, and it's just a, an undesirable subject too. I mean, you know, people don't even think about it. They just take that baby wipe and whatever and throw it in the toilet. They don't even think about that.
Right. It's commonplace now and wipes are so commonplace. They're used for everything and, uh, so it's just compounding. And like I said, now people don't even really think about it. I, I believe that, uh, you know, all we can do is get out there and tell them that these things don't go in there, whether it's flushable or not. That's here regardless. You know, it, it doesn't go in there unless it's toilet paper. So, and it's amazing what a little PR will do. I was sitting in the dentist chair and I just happened to mention an issue that we were having with the wipes. And she, oh, really? You know, and she goes, oh, I, yeah, I throw those in there all the time. And then a month and a half later or so, my fiancee happened to go to the dentist, same dentist, and through conversations found out that she was with me and she remembered that. And the dentist said, yes, your, your, your fiancee said that and I do not put that material in the toilet anymore. So, I mean, one person at a time.
Right. And you know, maybe, you know, if you're looking to get the word out there, you know, some of the part of it is all those public bathrooms, all the bathrooms, every stall in every place should have that little signage on the inside of the doors. They used to have signs on them.
Well, actually, uh, my son used to live up in Fargo and went to brewery over in Moorhead and in the bathroom they have signs posted up in there. You know, that.
And I, I downloaded a bunch of variety of them. You know, I searched them one time when I was putting this presentation together. So there, there's a lot of them out there. It's picking which one and, and do we do an outreach to have, you know, business owners and industry owners do it themselves or do we provide them or stuff like that? So, you know, that's all think, good things to talk about. But, uh, yeah, first thing is having the opportunity to stand up here and present it and hopefully some viewers at home get the message too.
Last, this summer you had a open house, right?
Correct. And we're trying to do more of that. We're trying to be more transparent. We're trying to be more open. I imagine, um, this last spring for Public Works Week, we, uh, all, all of the public works facilities hosted a, a joint open house. So, um, we've been having more, uh, school groups come in. Um, we've entertained, uh, groups from Ridgewater College in Wilmer, different, different things. So, uh, we're, we're, we're doing our part and, um, we're always open to hosting more people. And anytime any of you good folks want to come and visit, you're more than welcome. So.
All right. Thanks, Tim.
You bet. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Uh, review of the draft, uh, Truck Highway fifteen Main Street reconstruction project cooperative agreement and associate cost sharing approach.
Unfortunately, as alluded to in the packet on the board action form, Mindat wasn't able to put together a graph for us in time here. It's going, still going through their central office review. So they are, they're very particular what they're, they're going to provide us. So, uh, we're in a holding pattern at this time. We do have some initial cost estimations. Uh, we touched on those, uh, a little bit at our citizen advisory group meeting. I know Chad and then Steve were at that. Uh, we also touched on it briefly at resource allocation committee, uh, last week. But, uh, I want to do further work breaking down that estimate from the city's funding source standpoint. So, but, uh, the big thing that I hope comes prior to the next meeting in November here is the actual draft of the cooperative agreement, uh, associated with the project. And that tells us not only what we're going to participate in funding and to what degree, but also what our maintenance responsibilities are going into the future. And then touch you on some specific items. Well, not so much the, uh, well, Steve's going to be talking about the public art, uh, pedal stools pillars are actually going to be outside of the, uh, the city right of way now. But, uh, uh, you know, some other aspects, uh, within the right of way that , uh, will be the city's responsibility. So hopefully in two weeks we'll have something to look at, look at then.
All righty. Sounds good. Uh, review of ordinance number nineteen dash eight oh nine, uh, ordinance relating transit merchant peddler and food vendors.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Um, so as you know, over the past several meetings, we talked about trying to update our transient merchant and food cart ordinances. And at the last meeting, we decided we would perhaps take a crack at combining the two ordinances into one. Um, staff did combine them into one or attempt to combine them into one, uh, tried to address all the things we talked about over the past several months as far as the city administrator issuing the licenses, having these multi-vendor events, having the temporary licenses. And we had added this section, um, at the end of section eleven point oh four that basically says, hey, you don't even need a license if you're invited to be on private property. So, um, we've talked about this in depth. Um, hopefully you've had a chance to review it and if you have any comments about it, uh, I would be interested in hearing those and perhaps keep us some direction as far as, uh, how you want to go forward.
Good. It's nice and clean, having everything together. Um, I had two things, one on eleven four where it's the exemptions. We've got the event center, the fairgrounds. We still have the mall, which is private property, which now we won't need that, right?
Correct. Yeah, absolutely right.
And then, um, eleven three with the types of licenses. Um, like with the temporary, we're saying up to four times, three consecutive days each. And we haven't talked about the fee that we would charge and that's, I think we need to consider that because if it's, do we want to try to cover some of our costs? How is that different with some of the other temporary license? You know, if it's fifty dollars, you know, an annual license is a hundred and twenty-five. So, um, you know, if it's forty dollars, that would be three times would be getting you close to the annual license. And forty dollars probably covers the costs a little bit more, right? I'm thinking cost of labor and all that, you know, or if it's thirty dollars, then, then four times is close to the annual. But one is what's a good fee to charge? And then I think we should look at how many times you can have one from that context as well. You had mentioned about the cost of, you know, do we collect a fee? You had mentioned about the cost of, you know, do we collect a fee to cover our costs?
Right.
So that's the only two things I saw and I liked it otherwise.
I, I think obviously with this, we'll take that feedback and you guys will consider a first reading. And, you know, we can throw some fee scenarios out there for you to look at. And there's a desire to amend that portion of the, of the ordinance that's, you know, at that, when we're looking at that first reading, I'd say it's probably appropriate then, so.
So if we make those changes, would you be okay with it being on for a first reading next meeting? Or are we not at that point yet?
What's the hurry? No, I think it's good.
Okay.
All right, uh, moving on, Hutchinson Pillar Streetscape and Allocation of Funding.
I hand it over to Councilmember Cook, who I know is a part of the Public Arts Commission and has been working on this project for the last several months, so.
Do have a little presentation, but just as some background, um, as it says in the packet, uh, this project came forward, you know, to the city council back in February. It was actually been worked on since last, maybe August of two thousand and eighteen when, uh, some of the work started. The planning was being done for the Main Street project and the Citizens Committee and Kent, um, you know, talked about trying to incorporate some public art into the Main Street project. So, um, the Public Arts Commission started looking at ideas to do that. And as shown at the February twelfth council meeting, and this concept of having some pillars that related back to some of the values that have been integral to the community since its founding, you know, was arrived at. So, um, at that meeting, we talked about applying for a grant through SMOC, which was gonna be due in July. And then we would come back in September after we found out if we had gotten approval for that. We would also have better designs of what was being proposed, uh, to be able to share with you at that time. Going forward now, artists have been chosen, we've got some designs, uh, that, uh, everybody, you know, has been happy with. And, uh, the one thing that wasn't done as part of that was the SMOC grant. Uh, we decided to wait until the second round of grants for that, uh, which would be due in December eleventh. And then we'll find out, uh, if we get awarded anything in January. That actually turned out to be a good thing to wait because some of the plans with Mindot hadn't been finalized yet. And when they really started looking at, uh, the locations for the project, two of the locations, it was deemed that there was just too much underground infrastructure there. So that they were gonna have to be moved around the corner onto city right of way. And, uh, so then the decision was made to move all of them. So now we can incorporate that into the grant application and, um, there's some other things, too. So, so at this point, I wanna share with you the designs and a little bit about the artists, the locations, um, a budget with that. And our hope, uh, is that, uh, the council would approve again, uh, that up to thirty-eight thousand dollars, uh, towards the project. And, um, but that would be contingent on us getting the rest of the funding, the SMOC grant or other grants, donations to be a part of that. So with that, share a little bit. Just I can close that off and minimize it. Okay, again, a little bit of background with this is, um, the, the Public Arts submission, uh, Commission actually, uh, went out with requests for qualifications as part of the process first. And, uh, these outlined what artists would need to do if they were interested in applying for the project. And, uh, we posted them in a variety of different areas and professional artists', uh, sites and, uh, so that the word got out. And, uh, we wound up having an artist selection committee that included Morgan Baum, uh, it's Public Arts Commission, Chris Hague, downtown property owner, Lis- Lisa Hill, who works downtown, is also the board chair for the Public Arts, um, sorry, for the Center of the Arts. And then Mary Hutchinson and myself, uh, were on that. We interviewed three artists for the oak trees and also three artists for the side panels. Some people applied for both, some applied just for the oak trees, some were just for the side panels. The group picked Nick Legaros from Minneapolis, uh, to do the oak trees. Nick has had two pieces, part of the sculpture scroll that you can see listed there. Uh, you'll see some other examples of his artwork that he's done in the past, so very accomplished. Greg Mueller from Lutzen was selected to do the, uh, bronze side panels. And Greg and Nick both know each other, have been through, uh, uh, some of the same, uh, training, um, schools. And, uh, so they're anxious to work together for the first time. Originally, I'll show you where the pillars are gonna be at now, uh, after what was done with Mindot. And then we'll go with that. One thing that, uh, was added through the discussion was, uh, the inclusion of time capsules into each of the pillars. So that members of the public could submit, um, cards or information about the value and what that means to them, um, to be a part of, um, the project itself. And that helps to increase public participation in the project. This is a screen showing where the locations would be now. Again, originally they were gonna be on Main Street side, but, uh, now they're moved around the corner. Still on the bump outs that are being proposed as part of the project, but on, uh, this, uh, city side, on, um, the side of the pedestrian route. So there's one over by Dairy Queen. And then at First Avenue South, uh, by Library Square on, uh, the northeast side of First Avenue. And then on the, uh, southwest side over by Citizens Bank. And this is the intersection that had all the infrastructure, uh, that created the move then. The post office was always originally planned to be, uh, off around the corner, uh, due to some of the other conflicts in that area. So now all of them are on city property. That gave us the, uh, couple benefits. We don't have to go through Mindot approval, which is a task in itself. That being said, they're really great, they wanted to try to make this work for us, so I wanna thank them for that and don't wanna dismiss that at all. But then also because of the move, that allowed us to add a third side panel to balance and add a little bit more art to the project with that. And I'll show you that in a minute. So this is some of the examples of Nick Legaros, who would do the tree art. Again, some really, um, high-profile projects such as Goldie Gopher at the U of M. And, uh, Nick did a statue of Sid Hartman that's in Target Center now. The other thing is that he has experience, sorry about that, with making some trees that are really pretty lifelike and, uh, so we're excited about having Nick do that. Greg, uh, also an accomplished bronze artist, um, doing a variety of different projects. One in the upper left that shows, you know, some of the words and how he's been able to, uh, do text. And what you can't see on that is kinda some wood grain and bark feel to it on those steps where it says Fergus Falls and Dalton. So he's gonna be incorporating some of that same type of, uh, feel and touch to this project. Oops, wrong one. So this is, uh, the design that Greg and working with the selection committee came up with. The idea was always to, uh, have this brick pillar, the brick would be kinda the yellow brick, like what's on the library and, uh, the band shell of the library. So it had some of that historic character to it as well. Uh, the side panels would be, uh, bronze and they'd be arched, so that kinda complements, uh, again, the windows on the library, uh, some of the arches down at the utilities, um, uh, facility. Um, the arches on Highway seven, the retaining walls and the bridge and some things like that. So try to have that theme carry through. On top, and I'll show you some of the, uh, oak tree, but there'd be the oak tree. And the oak tree was selected, uh, kinda as a representative of something that, uh, just through its lore and meaning is, uh, really represents harmony, protection and strength and, uh, long life and things like that. Through the side panels then, and the values, they're kinda like our roots and, uh, foundation as well. So Greg incorporated roots and then, uh, has the values listed under there. And you see that in this one, sustainability is a brighter color, uh, like the border. And each of the panels, um, for the pillar, uh, is gonna have one theme to it. So this one would be sustainability on its side would be a leaf and there'd be sustainability on that. Another one would be focused on education and, uh, so that education would be highlighted, uh, through that. The leaves, again, it kinda ties back to, uh, the oak trees as well. But he's picked four different native oak tree leaves. And, um, he would then, each one would be on one of the different pillars itself. Kinda get a sense of the scale, um, again, these would be, the pillars itself would be about four and a half feet tall. And then the tree on top would be another two feet and then about two feet wide. Pillars, four feet, four and a half feet tall, two feet wide, and then another two feet for the tree. So very, uh, approachable, uh, by kids and families and adults as well. And that, again, they'll be able to do some different things with the patinas, um, uh, the leaves that show up as well as on the tree leaves themselves, too. And that's something that, uh, Nick and Greg will work together on. And then put this in the packet because I didn't know where it was gonna go out, but I just wanted to give you a flavor. Um, this was an early mock-up of, uh, the tree. And Greg didn't fill out, or I'm sorry, Nick didn't fill out all the leaves and all that, but he just wanted to show, you know, the concept of what he would do. And it's very, he said it'll be very strong. All the different clusters of leaves will be welded together and welded to the branches. So again, it'll be very strong and filled in, they'll have different colors of the patina, uh, that'll match. You know, you might have something for summer, something for fall and, uh, winter and spring as well. And then, uh, the last part of it, getting back to some of the meanings, you know, there'll be a small plaque, if you go back, um, these small plaques or plates will be placed right on the lower side of the cap itself. So a little bit more eye level. But they'll talk a little bit about each value. And it starts off with some of the historical connection to the community with that. And then more of the contemporary, where things are at now and why those are, same values are important. So there'll be one for service, one for education. And again, it goes back to the founders, you know, for, of the city and the Hutchinsons and the others, humanity and sustainability. Those would be on the panel with, um, the values themselves, where they're all listed together. There'll be another plate that talks about each of the oak trees. Some will be in general and then there'll be a part of each species of oak that's represented. And then there'll be a third plate on the side with the, the bare roots that will list the artists and the other donors as part of that. So, um, try to balance things out and I think it turned out really nice. Morgan and Kay are here, they're part of the project and, um, I think it's clean, uh, gives people some explanation. And then goes back to the foundation, that's marked, to downtown. And then, uh, again, the, um, um, the whole idea, the time capsule incorporates some other, uh, community engagement as part of that, too. So with that, uh, as far as funding and the budget, before we had talked about seventy-five thousand and that was considering two of the side panels. Now that we're having three, that added another five thousand dollars to it. So the trees are thirty-five thousand dollars, uh, the side panels would be twenty-five thousand. The pillars themselves, the architect, uh, through S E H who drew it up, he estimated those at five thousand dollars apiece. They're actually gonna be part of the Mindot bid, right? And, uh, so we'll get a final price when that all happens, right?
Yeah, exactly, Steve, I was gonna mention that, uh, that's really out of our control. You know, the, this will be a bid item within, uh, you know, a large construction bid package, obviously. Uh, you know, the low bidder, this item will be within the, the overall low bid, low bidders' package, albeit it might not be the, the lowest bid for this specific item. You know, and that'll be out of our control and, and thinking, I guess, a little bit forward here. Worst case scenario, if the low bidder, uh, puts a large price on this item that we're not comfortable with, I think the good thing is, uh, with them landing outside the right of way, there might be a, a different delivery approach, you know? So I just wanted to make note of that, Steve, 'cause, yeah, this is an estimated number, you know, provided by the architect, you know, to arrive at the twenty thousand that, that Steve has up there. But, you know, this will be what that- But, you know, this will be, what that ultimately is will be out of our control within the overall bid package.
I did go to a local masonry contractor and they gave a bid. And actually, it was a little bit higher, like twenty-three thousand dollars for all of them. But he did note that originally there was this, the cap had a slope into it to help with the water runoff. And the contractor noted that that added a substantial amount of money just to have that because they all had to be made separately for that. So, and that was going to be over three thousand dollars just for that. So the twenty thousand, we should be close, but as Ken said, we won't know.
Yeah, if all goes well, and we have a good partner with MnDOT, you know, that was willing to put this in their bid package, the construction of the pillars. So if all goes well, you know, the number will be twenty thousand, give or take, the pillars will get built within the project. And then, yeah, the art will get implemented thereafter.
So as far as the funding itself, and again, we have the thirty-eight thousand from the city, but not to exceed. Public Arts Commission, as we talked about before, is eighteen thousand dollar contribution. The SMOC grant would be nineteen thousand. Again, we won't find out about that until January. We did apply for a community foundation grant and were awarded two thousand dollars. We just found out about that a couple of weeks ago. And then we'll be looking for some other donations and grants to be a part of it. So what I, I'm here tonight on behalf of the Public Arts Commission and as part of the project is to ask for your approval to go up, you know, for that thirty-eight thousand dollar contribution from the city and allow the public arts to include eighteen thousand dollars into the project contingent on us getting the rest of the funding that's needed and that the budget doesn't increase, you know, outside of what we have available, based on when the bids come back and that part of it.
Yep. I think, looking forward, this thirty-eight thousand, you know, would be treated in the same manner that the streetscaping amenities that we pulled outside of the contract, MnDOT's contract, we talked about months ago. So refurbishing benches, potentially additional benches, new trash receptacles that would replace the existing ones that are a bit beat up out there. New planters, new bell shaped planters that are out there, potentially new metal planters that we're currently reviewing. So all that would be put into one package with an approximate cost. You know, that would stand alone, similar to this contribution to the project. And basically, those two plus what's our cost sharing within the MnDOT cooperative agreement would basically make up the city's construction costs relative to the project.
Morgan, did you want to add anything?
Steve, can I just make a quick announcement? So, because I know there's some people who probably don't want to sit for the council meeting, even though I don't know why. If you're here for the branding and marketing, they're going to be meeting in the front conference room. So you don't, I mean, you're more than welcome to join us for the rest of the council meeting, but I just wanted to make sure that if you're sitting here wondering, this doesn't have anything to do with marketing and branding that's taking place. That will be taking place in the front conference room, so.
So, anyway.
It's a good project. I mean, and I think everyone has worked really hard. The artists that were chosen are stellar and it'll be a great addition to our downtown. I mean, I think it's a beautiful piece of art and it reflects all the values that our city has.
Some of the big ones, for sure.
And what's nice is this art is, the way it is put up is it is for children to touch and for adults too. I mean, it's not something that you do, you just can look at, but no touch. And that's kind of beautiful also.
Anything else, Steve?
Yeah, Steve, I got a question for you. On the grants, do you have to specify dollars on your grant? Or is it, can you go above and beyond of what you're requesting? How does that work?
Yeah, we actually did with the community foundation, but they gave us a lesser amount and so that, and they spread out with more people.
Yeah.
With the SMOC grant, it's up to twenty-five thousand dollars you can ask for. But again, you know, we wanted to go a little less just because they've already awarded some sizable grants for this type of grant. It's a legacy grant application. And so we didn't want to tap out and be the largest one necessarily. And we also wanted to be able to show other participation and partnerships as part of this, which just like Lisa Berg talked about with the Art Center, you know, their grants, when they have other participations that, that they look at that and that helps with your proposal. So, so our thought was, you know, limit the one to SMOC, make it a little more reasonable. And there are some other opportunities for other ones that we can apply for to make up some of the difference as well as private donations to be a part of it. And there's already been some discussions.
So with that, with that in mind, then you would decrease the amount that the city, the thirty-eight thousand would basically maybe be, go down and are you thinking about?
I guess I would plan on the thirty-eight, but you know, if we're fortunate to get some other donations and some other grants, then yeah, that would be the area where we would reduce the city's contribution.
Well, I guess my question is, is are you basically working at thirty-eight thousand from the city, eighteen thousand from the arts? And then the, the grant money as being a stipulation? I mean, you're counting on the city, you know, I understand that part.
Yeah.
But are you going to count on the city's dollars as far as a set amount so that you can work off of other things? Are you going to try and decrease that amount if you can?
Like I said, the SMOC grant's the first one. So we'll have thirty-eight thousand dollars in there for that. But as we go forward, you know, if we find other grant opportunities, we'll apply for some of those and then adjust things accordingly. It would be the city's, so. So right now, yeah, I would say the city, we're asking that you plan on the thirty-eight thousand.
So what happens if it comes in higher? Then what are we going to do?
Well, we don't have to do the project. The artists know that we can cancel it, you know, for whatever reasons. So there's always that opportunity or else, again, trying to have some other opportunities for other grants or donations.
And city council has that option on the tail end to either approve or disapprove at that particular point if the, if the total dollar amount isn't sustained.
Sure, yeah. And that's why I'm saying that it would be contingent on getting the grant and having other funding to cover those other costs. So again, thirty-eight thousand dollars, if you could plan on that and allowing the Public Arts Commission to contribute eighteen thousand, then we'll make up the difference. And if we can't, or the price goes up higher, then we'll have this discussion where to go next with that.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, it's not to exceed, right?
And that's why I said not to exceed for the city's portion, thirty-eight. But again, that, right now with some of the funding requests, that's thirty-eight thousand is the number that we're using from the city.
At this point, it's not to exceed?
Yes.
But it could exceed, possibly.
Well, only with your approval. And the idea is not to come back to ask for that, so.
Okay, I guess that's the question I should have asked.
Anything else for Steve?
Can I make a motion to approve the funding?
I will second that.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve the funding. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. We'll call Mary.
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Nay. Carrie's four one.
Just any thoughts, just?
No, I just thought that where the thirty-eight thousand could be used for other things. And I had a lot of people approach me, well, few people approached me that felt that way, so. All righty, moving on. Purchase agreement for the property located at 205 Washington Avenue East, the Econo Foods building. Mr. Sabora.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. This as well is something that we have been talking about for several months and that's concerning the possible purchase of the Econo Foods property here in town. Thank you, Melissa. I think most of you know where the property is located. Basically in the corner of Adams and Washington. And this actually is the revised map that was handed out to you tonight. The version that you had received earlier, actually councilperson Cook had discovered a discrepancy along the sidewalk here of the Econo Foods and also the loading dock here that wasn't properly indicated in the map that you had received in your handout and that was included in the packet. So this is a revised Exhibit 1A to that purchase agreement. And what's proposed is that the city will be purchasing all of the parking lot, the Econo Foods building itself and then the parking area on the, what would be the east side of the Econo Foods building. I wanted to briefly go over what the main points of the purchase agreement entail. So in plain language, as I could state it, we're going to be purchasing the Econo Foods building and all of the parking areas on the east and west side for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I would also have to let the council know that the city's real estate advisor bill able did a very nice job in negotiating that price. I don't know, Matt, if you have any information about?
Anybody may recall that it was originally listed at one point nine million. So, all I can say is I'm happy with the price.
Right, we were able to get the property at a very nice price. We'll put ten thousand dollars down on the property as earnest money. One thing perhaps that went into the final price that was obtained as we're purchasing the property as is. So we're going to be assuming any risks, especially any environmental risks that might go along with the purchase of that property. But along with that, the city has ninety days to inspect the premises to determine if there are any environmental problems with the property. And if there is anything that's found by the city's engineers that might be objectionable during that ninety day period, we're able to walk away from the property and our earnest money is going to be returned to us. During that ninety day inspection period, we're also going to have an opportunity to have a survey done. The closing date of the property is proposed to be April fifteenth, twenty twenty. And then finally, prior to the closing date, Ericson's, which is the owner of the Econo Foods property, is going to see to it that any liens, mortgages, leases, any other agreements that affect the property are going to be released prior to the closing date. So that's in a nutshell. I don't know if you have any further questions about the transaction. Matt and I can attempt to answer those questions.
Mark, there was some questions about the title. Is that all cleared up?
Right, so initially, as part of the due diligence that the city went through and the disclosure by Ericson's, way back when, I believe it was in nineteen ninety-three, Ericson's had entered into a first refusal document with a company called Gateway Foods from across Wisconsin that would have given Gateway Foods the opportunity to purchase that property should Ericson's receive any other offer on the property. Since that, since the discovery of that first refusal document, we were able to negotiate with Ericson's a provision whereby that's not going to be considered an encumbrance on the title and the title insurance company is going to be insuring over that eventuality if it should come to pass. Ericson's has already reached out, done all of its requirements under that first refusal document with Gateway Foods. Apparently Gateway Foods is a company that no longer exists. So all of their efforts have been for naught. So the chances of anybody coming forward connected with Gateway Foods would be incredibly minimal. But even if that should happen, it's not going to be a permitted exception to the title work that's going to be completed as part of the transaction. Any other questions?
Matt? I don't know if everybody's heard, but why would we want to buy this?
I think it was a go-kart track we were looking to put in there. Obviously, you know, we've explored, you know, through our facility study that we did, I think it's two years ago now. You know, it was identified that the current police station is simply not adequate on many different fronts. One, the size, it does not meet the needs of the current police department. Two, we've got three different locations that our police departments in. You know, right now, our investigative unit's not even in same building as the rest of the officers. And so, you know, you think about, you know, so all of that plays into effect along with just the current needs and demands of the police force. I mean, think back to when that building was obtained and what, what's now all a part of what goes on in policing from the equipment, body cameras, all that. We've essentially outgrown the current facility that, that we're in. And so as a desire to, to look for something, to, to have a new police station, it was, you know, through our due diligence, through looking, we felt the best thing would be for us to build something new. Our desire is to keep the police in the downtown area. And this happened to be the most logical area based off of size, kind of what we're looking for, keeping that in the downtown area. And then I would say we've got a very favorable price on the purchase of that. And.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Motion by Steve, second by Chad to approve. Any other discussion?
Just for clarity purposes, this essentially is the process to purchase it. Doesn't mean today it's ours, but this is the, this is really authorizing us to, to move forward on that.
Call motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, thanks, Mark.
Thank you, counsel.
Advertisement for bid and set bid opening date for recreation center gymnasium roof and exterior wall upgrade.
Do we have Marv wait a little bit longer?
It's my turn?
Come on.
We're saving the best for last. Here I am. Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm here as a city representative of the facilities committee. Back in May, we went through this process to advertise and seek bids for the recreation center roof and sidewall replacement. The recreation center was built in nineteen eighty-five and we've occupied that since. We've upgraded it many times over various things, including this aquatic center. And the interior is in pretty good shape. So the last things that we really need to address is the roof replacement and the sidewalls. So what the building committee is seeking is permission to advertise for bids soon in December and have a bid opening in the middle of January with construction to commence in the spring. So the construction schedule, if all these stars align and we get the right bid and the council approves the bid, construction would be complete by the end of August. So I have no presentation. I'm just here to answer any questions you might have.
Counsel, you may recall, we didn't receive any bids this past summer. Some of it was just the tight window that we had, had put into place. One other thing to touch on, and Marv didn't necessarily know that, we've got several different bid alternatives. we've got several different bid alternatives. If you look in your packet, and I know it's kind of sideways, it's page 87. There's actually five different alternatives, and that's on regarding the type of roof that goes in. And some of it also includes essentially not doing anything with, with the outside sidewalls. And some of it has it including just, I think, cleaning the sidewalls and then giving some additional options for it. And so really, this bid is going to give us several different options to look and choose from, assuming that we get some bids this time.
Right.
So you will have some options on, once again, the, the type of roof that's, that's going on. And then, and whether or not there's, you know, some of the side panel work that.
So the estimate we've got from the architect is, is the high end? That would, that would do pretty much everything? And then there's the other alternates that would, at the very bottom end, would be roof only. And then we would clean the, the block walls and, and seal the block walls. So those are the, you know, top to bottom, and that's what, what the various options will include.
Make a motion to approve the advertisement?
I'll second that.
Can you read? This is basically the same package as before.
Yep, just although I think we did include a couple additional roof.
Different alternatives.
Side wall options than what we did in, in May. But otherwise, yes, essentially, it's the couple, I think we had an additional bid alternative or two. Because I think our first one, we had three bid alternatives. This one has five now.
Motion by Steve, second by Mary, or Chad, I'm sorry. Can't even read my own writing. Motion by Chad, second by Mary, to advertise for bids. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carrie, thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Governance, we have minutes from Economic Development Authority Board minutes from September 25, 2019. Touch Utilities Commission minutes from September 25, 2019. And Planning, Zoning, Building Department Quarterly Report. All righty, Chief Griffin, you have anything for us tonight?
Nothing new, just thank you for the continued support. Appreciate it.
Tim, you have anything else for us?
Oh, no, I think I took enough of your time.
Thank you. Kent?
I'll take some.
No, quickly, yeah.
Don't cumbly on us.
Yeah, no, three things here. Highway 15, Main Street detour today, you might have noticed, about half of the day. It actually went fairly well. Not the best day to do tree removals, but obviously we had to coordinate it with MINDOT. It was well advertised. Well, I should say well advertised. It was advertised to some degree by them. But anyways, we got that taken care of. That was basically to put us in position, or put MINDOT in position, to start work in May. There's rules out there as far as when the state can cut trees down with respect to bats, believe it or not, so, yeah, in certain timelines. So the issue was going to be, by the time the project was let next year and the contract was executed, they wouldn't be able to cut down the necessary trees next summer to do the work. So we worked out an agreement with MINDOT, city staff, and took care of the, the smaller trees and the removals. And then Finskey Tree Service took care of some of the larger ones, so. Thanks to everybody involved in that. Leaves, yeah, they're accumulating. I just want to echo, let's try to keep the grass out of the leaves. I know there's still some green grass out there. There might still be some people mowing.
After today.
Yeah. Believe it or not, and it might warm up again, it sounds like, in a week or so here. So, yeah, we, we only want to be taking leaves, is what it boils down to. If there's a substantial amount of grass clippings within the leaf piles, windrows, city staff is just going to skip those and move on. That's real, it's really tough on the equipment, vacuuming up grass clippings. And then lastly, we talked about the VFW donation and the alley project. Just wanted to let council know, and we, we did have this as a potential agenda item a couple of meetings ago, when we went out for, for quote solicitation to do that alley work. And then we, since then, we went out again, basically giving contractors all our next summer to do that work. And we basically, we received two quotes that time, but they were basically the same price. So I think that kind of just paints the picture of where the construction environment is going. You know, going into next spring, they didn't have a, they didn't have a favorable spring. They didn't have a favorable fall. And they have a lot of work on their plate heading into next year, obviously with work yet to be bid. And I think that's going to be reflected in a project, you know, a smaller project. Our, our approach, just in case, your approach by the VFW and their representatives, we, we hope to include that work within our pavement management program, project. More than likely, it's an alternate bid, just so we can carve it out easily. Hopefully, we get a good price that's less than the $95,000, give or take, that we saw just a week or so ago. Unbelievable, the two numbers were within $127 of each other or something, so. Yeah, so I, I think that just tells us, you know, where we might be heading construction cost-wise going into next year, especially in smaller projects. That's it.
Bad water leak on Adams.
Bad water leak? Yeah, I wouldn't say it was bad. It's unfortunate where it was.
Where it was, yeah. Well, I figured it was bad because it was right in the middle of the street.
Obviously, the infrastructure is relatively new there, but, yeah, there was an, an issue with the service saddle there, so. And it had to be dug, obviously.
I blame the flushable wipes.
Yeah. Not on that one.
Well, I congratulate you, Kent. You made both ladies in the audience grim when you said bats.
That's it. Thank you.
Mark, do you have anything?
Nothing else tonight.
Mary?
Well, yesterday was Veterans Day, so it's a day late, but thank you to all of those veterans who have served. And because of them, we have this freedom. So thank you to all of them. That's it.
Thanks, Mary. Dave?
Sorry, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Yeah, Steve?
I gave you a break last time, but, yeah. One, I just wanted to thank staff and for the work that was done on Gateway Park. It's still not done. The picnic table isn't there. And there might be a water fountain added next summer as part of tying in off of Main Street, possibly, if we get a good price with that. But I think it turned out really nice, so, and it'll look nice summer when the landscaping takes off. So thanks for that. I just had a question, like out at Hatt's, and, you know, you drive by and you see all the piles of material and some of its creekside stuff, right? But just wondering, you know, that berm started to get planted, and I kind of thought the idea was to actually plant some trees or maybe some pine trees in there to help screen some of that. And it's never been done, just wondering if that could be looked at, maybe as part of the grant project that we applied for, or something else?
Talked to general, yeah, I'm not exactly that, that permit, or I don't know if it was a conditional use permit. There's something on the books of some sort. But obviously, I don't know, we, no matter what we plant, it's going to adequately screen what's going on behind it, but I, I hear what you're saying. And the other thing I would question is the nature of the material that the berm was constructed out of. You know, isn't the most ideal for growing trees, I don't believe either. But, yeah, I can definitely check into it, Steve, yeah.
Okay, that's all. Thanks, Steve. Chad?
I don't have anything else.
Matt?
Obviously, we've got the branding and marketing initiative kicked off, actually, today. You know, they're conducting one of the public meetings, or public sessions right now. And there's been a couple of focus groups. Just, I guess, another reminder that there is another public meeting tomorrow night from 5:30 to 6:45, and that will be at the depot. If anyone's interested in participating in that, they, they have that opportunity tomorrow as well. That's pretty much it for me.
Yeah. Now, at resource allocation, I kind of asked Kent about putting lights on the end of Fifth Avenue. And I was just wondering if the council would be all right if we would draft a letter to, to MINDOT to see if we could get that accomplished?
Oh, Fifth Avenue 22?
Correct.
That's, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, it's pretty dark down there.
Yeah, I was thinking more about that than I think what happened, Gary, years ago when we were looking at it, while we had the state. But then also, we didn't, the city didn't even own or possess the Fifth Avenue right-of-way out to Highway 22 at the time. So the county was involved also. We really, we didn't have a leg in that, that intersection. So I think now, I think we have a little more of a, a leg to stand on, you know, with respect to getting lights put up there. I don't, we were pushing it. You know, we had to get power out there. We didn't have any right-of-way rights or property rights. And so let me, I will, I'll approach MINDOT, we'll try to get some sort of feedback out of them. Obviously, some, nothing's going to happen this fall, this, this winter. But I think it would be great with the traffic, traffic's going to pick up on 22, obviously, next year when 115 gets shut down, no matter what the state of detour tries to accomplish, you know, going out to 115. So we'll try to get something then, next spring timeframe. But I'll let you know if a letter is needed, I guess, for that matter.
As long as I'm talking letters, I know this isn't even close to being in city limits, but maybe a bypass lane and a turn lane out by the winery?
Yeah, there, there's a bypass lane.
I know it's down a little bit for memory circle, but.
Yeah, on the one, yeah, I went through the accident, or not, yesterday morning, a few days ago.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, they, the county, McCloud County is working with MINDOT to do a Highway 7 safety audit, I think is what they're calling that study. That's basically, it's largely funded, if not entirely funded, by MINDOT, was the agreement that was arrived at, and this is probably two years ago. Mr. Brunkhorst has been pushing for that to be accomplished. MINDOT planning staff has had limited time lately, so they've kind of had that on the back burner. You know, they want to, I know that's an area that's identified. I know the, the Winstead, Lester Prairie corners is another area of concern, and it's going to be analyzed. So, yeah, really, it's, I, I think it's, as soon as MINDOT has enough staff, time, and resources, they're supposed to be doing a, a study.
That could be great if council would agree with that.
Yeah. But I'll keep you posted. I'll, I'll touch base with John on that front, to see if there's anything that needs to be done from the city specifically.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
That's all I have, besides, good luck to the football team.
Yes.
They're playing at US Bank Stadium at 4:30 on Thursday. So good luck to the Tigers. With that?
Absolutely.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?